Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding is absent. Johnson? Absent. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of remarks by Catherine Melton.
All right, thank you, please. Everybody have a seat. Riker, Harding, and I are switching weeks of giving the application. This week, what I just want to say, as everybody knows, today is election day. The polls are open until 8:00 PM. If you haven't voted, you can still vote. If you know where your polling place is, you can... You go Douglas County Election Commission, you can mention your address, it'll give you your polling place. I want to tell you, this is the one day that as Americans, it's our duty to vote. And if you don't vote, I just want to say, I'm not here to complain in the future. But this is the, this is the one time when you get to make decisions. We sit up here and vote on things every week. Today is your day to cast your vote. So please go out there. If you want any more information, you can also go to voterinformation.org. And when you are there, these thankful workers, you know, they show up. And in fact, Heather Tippy Pierce was at my polling place this morning, dedicating her entire day. They show up before the sun rises, and they're going to be there cleaning up while after the polls close. And it's the same workers. They do it from morning all the way to night. So give them a quick thank you before you leave. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. And we look forward to hearing your testimony on our many items. I encourage you to turn your cell phones off, or at least to vibrate.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the villas at Pine Creek Woods, located southwest of 156th and Potter Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. I represent the applicant. I make myself available for any questions that the council may have today.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed? Motion second. Roll call.
Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding is absent. Johnson is absent. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved. Five to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Omaha Works Industrial Park Replat 16, located northwest of 120th and I Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Dan Dozel, Airheart Griffin Associates, 3552 Farnum Street. We are the project engineers. It's pretty simple, so I'll just answer questions if you may.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding is absent. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved. Six to zero. Items eight through 15 can be considered together for Kennedy Square East, located northeast of 30th Street and Spencer Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items eight through 10, ordinances to rezone this property from R5 District, R7 District, and CC District to R5 District, R7 District, and CC District. Item 11, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Items 12 and 13, ordinances to approve PUR overlay districts for mixed-use building and residential uses. Item 14, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 15, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items eight through 15 is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Terry Morrison with Airheart Griffin Associates, 3552 Farnum Street. I'm here on behalf of the owner. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Hi. Bill Lucash, Brinshaw Development, 903 South 184th Avenue Circle. Care to answer questions if I can. Thank you.
Brian Hanson here for the owner, 1823 Harney Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Here for the Omaha Housing Authority.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to approve.
Second. Motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding is absent. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items eight through 15 are approved. Six to zero. Item 16, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan to change the future land use map for the property generally located at 216th and Harrison Streets to identify this intersection as a convenience mixed-use center. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 16 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents? Public hearings closed? Motion a second. Roll call.
Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding is absent. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved. Six to zero. Item 17, to consider a Class D liquor license for Casey's 6170, located at 3529 South 72nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Proponents, please. Oh, I think they're proponent by Zoom. One minute here.
This is Joe Thompson, representing Casey's 4822 South 143rd. Here for any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents? Public hearings closed? Motion a second. Roll call.
Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding is absent. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved. Six to zero. Item 18, to consider a Class K liquor license for a liquor store located at 5402 North 90th Street, Suite 5450.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. Proponents, please. I believe we have Mr. Kelly by Zoom as well. All right, try that.
Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is simply an upgrade to a K license so they can do catering, and we're here for any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents? Are you an opponent on number 18, Donnie?
Is this a question I have? Is this Kelly Bold in Florence?
Nope.
Oh, okay, because I know that Kelly Bold is okay. I'm not sure about this.
Okay. Any other opponents on number 18? Seeing none, public hearings closed? All second. Roll call.
Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding is absent. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved. Six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 19, a resolution to request the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to require 415, located at 415 South 13th Street, to submit a formal application.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Ryan Wees, assistant city attorney. Good afternoon. We're here today at the request of the law committee to determine whether or not there is sufficient information contained within the police reports that have been submitted as part of the legislative record for you today to require K-Bob Incorporated, doing businesses 415, to submit a formal, long-form application for the renewal of their liquor license to the Liquor Control Commission. Your vote today is not whether K-Bob remains qualified to hold a liquor license. Your vote today, and the decision for the council today, is only to determine whether or not there is enough information or evidence in the record before you to require K-Bob to go through the formal, long-form application process. I'll begin by summarizing generally the information contained within the police tavern reports that have been submitted as part of the record. They begin with a report from February 28th, 2021, in which Omaha Police and Fire and Rescue responders were dispatched to Bar 415 for down party. Responding officers arrived and found a woman lying on the floor, unresponsive in a restroom. The victim was not alert, was not responsive, had shallow breathing and a pulse that appeared to be faint. She was taken to the University of Nebraska Medical Center for treatment. What's been marked as Exhibit Two for the council's consideration is a tavern report dated March 3rd, 2021. This report details a disturbance that started inside the bar and continued to the outside of the neighborhood. And it actually consists of two separate disturbances with related parties. The disturbance again started inside the bar. The parties were ejected from the establishment and continued their argument outside. Eventually, officers found two down parties near the intersection of South 13th Street and Harney. They, both parties appeared to have been assaulted. One party appeared to have been robbed, and the officers observed facial injuries and blood near both down parties. The remaining nine tavern reports that we'll discuss today all occurred in 2022, this year. The first is March as Exhibit Three, and it occurred on March 13th, 2022. This report details another disturbance where an individual was punched in the face inside the bar. Officers observed a visible injury, red marks, and swelling to his face and around his left eye. The individual wanted to make a report so that the incident could be documented so that others would know about the violence at the place. Marked as Exhibit Four for the council's consideration is a tavern report dated April 11th, 2022. This tavern report details two separate disturbances, one of which was started inside the establishment and continued outside, and another which occurred right outside the entrance to 415. Again, just general disturbances and fights that spilled out from the bar into the surrounding neighborhood. Marked as Exhibit Five for the council's consideration is a tavern report dated April 22nd, 2022. Again, officers observed a physical altercation between two patrons of 415 outside of the bar. Marked as Exhibit Six is a tavern report dated June 3rd, 2022. In this instance, the disturbance again occurred inside the bar and spilled into the surrounding neighborhood. Ultimately, it resulted in an individual throwing a bottle or some sort of property at a vehicle. The individual missed that vehicle, and it ended up breaking a window at another establishment in the Old Market. The individual who started the disturbance inside the bar did admit to officers of punching two individuals in the side of the head inside the bar. Marked as Exhibit Seven for the council's consideration is an exhibit dated June 11th, 2022. In this tavern report, officers report that they were near the intersection of 13th and Howard Street when they observed a fight begin at the 415 bar, while officers were responding to try and break up that disturbance outside. Several individuals attempted to run past the security at the establishment and enter the bar. Again, this shows a lack of management and control at the bar sufficient to control disturbances and to follow the rules and regulations of the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission and the Nebraska liquor statutes. Marked as Exhibit Eight for the council's consideration is a tavern report dated June 19th, 2022. Two officers were on patrol in the Old Market when they detected an odor of marijuana being smoked outside of 415. They made contact with the offending individual. The report does indicate that they determined that he was not a patron of the establishment, but he was outside of the property and liquor. Individuals who maintain liquor licenses do have a duty to ensure that illegal activity, including drug use, does not occur either in their establishment or adjacent outdoor areas such as this while the liquor license is in operation. Marked as Exhibit Nine is a tavern report dated July 24th, 2022. This report details a disturbance that in and of itself would be relatively minor. It appears to be a domestic disturbance that is fairly unrelated to the liquor license establishment. However, the concerning aspect of this report is that the victim states that security at 415 told him not to make a report to the police about the incident and the disturbance that occurred. What's been marked as Exhibit Ten for the council's consideration is a tavern report dated September 2nd, 2022. This report details two officers who were patrolling near 12th and Howard Street when they observed an individual walking in the Old Market with an open container of alcohol, a High Noon vodka, and soda in her hand. The individual was found to be under the age of 21, stated that she knew one of the bouncers at 415 and went into 415, obtained alcohol from the establishment, and consumed it at the bar as an underage individual, and then was allowed to leave the bar with an open container of alcohol in hand, at which point she encountered law enforcement officers in the Old Market. And finally, what's been marked as Exhibit Eleven is a tavern report dated September 18th, 2022. This report details just another disturbance fight that occurred within the bar at 415. Again, as with most of the reports that detail disturbances, they demonstrate a pattern and a lack of management and control at the establishment sufficient to control the patrons, prevent disturbances, prevent those disturbances from spilling into the surrounding neighborhood of the Old Market, and otherwise just generally confirm to, conform to the rules and regulations of the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. Again, your task today is not to determine whether or not K-Bob remains qualified to hold a liquor license. It is only to determine whether or not there is enough information presented in these reports or from other members of the public at this public hearing to require K-Bob to go through the formal, long-form renewal process to renew their license in the future. I'll be available for any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Good afternoon. Holly Barrett with the Downtown Improvement District, 1620 Dodge Street, Suite 140. 415 has been in our neighborhood for a long, long time, so we do not want them to go. But they have been on the radar for our private security team, and every month at our security meetings, we hear conversation from the police. And I think there has been a definite uptick in the tavern reports in the last 12 months. So again, I'm happy to hear that they are not under, under the, that they're not going to be losing their liquor license right now. We have found that when we ask some of our bars who are less than good neighbors, and that's what we're really talking about, is the behavior that's happening, starting in a bar, but then it's happening outside in the neighborhood afterwards. We have found that most of the bars that have to go through that whole big, long process, that they really do start to pay attention to best practices. They hire better off-duty officers. They really talk to their bouncers, and then they police outside of their patios. They go out into the community as well, just a good 15 feet or so. So we would highly recommend that they go through the process and get back to being really good neighbors, because they've been with us for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents?
Good afternoon. I'm Deb Cunningham, and I represent the 415. Present today is Regina Davis, who's been taking care of the security at 415, particularly in the evening and outside since we had the meeting with the liquor committee. It was obvious they wanted things addressed. They took immediate steps to do so, and I'm going to describe what those are.
Okay.
The owners are also here, in case anyone has a question for them.
Okay, and just your address for the record, too?
Pardon me.
Your address for the record, too?
900 South 75th Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you.
I'd like to spend maybe five minutes, because I don't like to be labor bad news. But let's start with that incident report in 2021. The young woman involved never had a drink at 415. She came in, she went directly towards the bathroom with her friends. She collapsed there. If 415 hadn't called the ambulance immediately, we don't know what would have happened with that young woman. But this is one of those things where so often, young people are moving from one place to the next. They didn't know what was wrong with her. They called the ambulance first. I think that was the responsible thing to do, although it did result in an incident report. There's no question about that. With regard to some of the other incident reports, the one, for example, one gentleman, it's Exhibit Number Three. He just says somebody maybe punched him in the bar because he shoved somebody else over a receipt. There's very little, I think, actually, a bar can do about such a quick incident. But basically, this report is simply reflecting what someone told the police. There was no charges on that. The next set was four, Exhibit Four. This fight starts because they don't let somebody in. This is what they're supposed to do. And so he gets disorderly outside. Now, I took the time going through all of the criminal citations that might have done, because some of them resulted in citations by the Omaha Police. They're all fines. Not one of these incidents was considered so, I'm not going to say it's not serious, but let's say egregious in some ways, to result in more than a fine. The Exhibit Five, this is one in which the people left, and they couldn't even get a statement from the people there. They were ejected. They were a little disorderly outside. And remember, when we're talking about the 415, we are talking about a bar that has the police sitting very close. They can see everything. If they see something disorderly, they're likely just to come over, whether the 415 calls them or not. That's not a problem. It's a good thing. But they can, they're situated where they can basically see all the activity in that area of the market. Also, on the other side, well, actually, most of the time, both sides of this bar are food trucks. So it brings a lot of people down, close to closing, after they've left another place. Maybe they try and get into the 415, maybe they don't. But there's a lot of room there, where people are just, for lack of a better word, accumulating. Exhibit Eight bothers me because this gentleman apparently is smoking pot out in front of the 415 on a bench after closing. If 415 might have known he was there, they would have, I'm sure, shown him the door. But because it was the time it was, I don't, they weren't even aware that he was there. He said he wasn't a patron of the bar. I am quite sure of concern is the incident that's Exhibit Ten. That is the apparent underage person who says they get into 415. We don't know if she was in 415 for sure, not, we couldn't identify it. But no one's denying that it's possible. I mean, we're not saying that it's impossible. She gets caught with a can of High Noon by the police, and she said she had basically snuck into 415. It's possible. What we're talking about here, though, is take a look at the history of the 415. We don't have them with underage drinking. We, we don't have a bunch of violations. It can happen to any bar. And I suggest that she kind of took maybe a little bit of advantage of what was going on at the door. 9-2 is important. I don't know what that means, but 9-2 is important because it's approximately one week after we hired new security. We were just in the process of melding that difference between security inside, security outside, how it's going to work. They hired Clyde Stellhorstman, and in particular, Regina Davis. Now, I've known Regina Davis for quite some time because she was security and guard at Douglas County Corrections for 30 years. She's a sergeant, and she has instituted a wide range of changes to handle that front. There's a line all the time because the IDs are gone through. One reason we were a little concerned about 9-2 is possibly she had a bad ID, but we don't know. Pat downs all the time. Nobody's allowed in after 140. And the reason for that isn't because they can't still serve them liquor. It's because you have to sort of clear out, or try and clear out, as much at the front so that you can start closing the inside of the bar. The inside of the bar starts, stops serving at a certain time, the lights come up, and then everybody's sort of prepared to move people out. No system's perfect, but this is pretty good. This is one where, first of all, many of the people who go to the bars down there know Ms. Davis. They have known her from Douglas County. They've known her from her community. She doesn't lie to them. She doesn't fight with them. She simply tells them what is expected at that door. There is radio communication between her and people who are, for example, at Eat the Worm. They will tell her if they see an issue that could cause her a problem, or if she's seeing something, she can try and communicate with them. While I mention that bar, I don't, I don't know the bar. I don't have a problem with the bar at all. I will tell you that the one incident report that's in here about the person throwing a bottle, if you take a look at what got filed on that by the city, all of that took place at Eat the Worm. And then they started moving away. The window broken was Eat the Worm, and if you look at the complaints filed by the city prosecutor's office, the locality in complaint is Eat the Worm. And that's where those people were. I have no reason to think Eat the Worm was doing anything wrong. This appeared to be a fight over a parking issue out front. And so somebody got upset, threw a bottle. I don't know what Eat the Worm could have done about it either. But that was not 415 specifically. I have... You know, 415 hires a lot of people, and these people have been in business there for 20 years. And I'm not going to stand here and say, well, they should have done this earlier. They should have done it. The fact is, is they've done it. They're trying to do it. They're trying to fix it. And I think it's really important to understand, first of all, the cost that's involved, what they've done. Do they begrudge that? No. It's necessary. If they're going to stay open, they've got to have security. But I think the steps they've taken to address separate areas is, is extremely important because no longer do people have to sort of move from inside to outside to see what might be going on on that street. Because Ms. Davis, and she always has at least one other person out front with her. And it's, like I said, it's very important. Ms. Davis is here to answer any questions about security that anyone might have.
Either just name an address for the record, if you want to speak?
Regina Davis, 2905 North 125th Avenue.
Okay. Anything you want to add, or are you just here to answer questions?
I can answer questions. I have nothing to add except for the fact that I do have experience, not just in my being a guard at Douglas County, but...
being a guard at Douglas County, but I also owned a bar in Omaha, Nebraska. So the things that I put in place were the things that I used in my operations as a owner of a bar here in Omaha, Nebraska.
Okay, thank you. We'll see if there's questions here in a minute. Any other opponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. There's a motion, a second to approve. No further questions? Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding is absent, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, six to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda items 20 through 24 was held on November 1st. Is there a motion? I'll second, motion in a second, roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding is absent, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 20 through 24 are approved, six to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items 25 through 30 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearings are closed. I'll second, roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding is absent, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 25 through 30 are approved, six to zero. Item 31, a resolution to approve the contract with Erickson Construction in the amount of $608,050 for the store's expressway pumping station fuel tank improvements, Third and Hartman Avenue project.
Public hearing and vote on number 31 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I'll second, roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding is absent, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 31 is approved, six to zero. Item 32, a resolution to approve the bid in the total amount of $124,800 from Dostal's Construction Company for the removal of existing poured surface and installation of new poured surface at Clarkson Park located at 124 North 42nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 32 is today, proponents, please. Mr. Kalsovich.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. City of Omaha Parks and Recreation Director Matt Kalsovich, 1819 Parterre Street. We're excited to bring this to you. This is the first of the ARPA-related funded projects for public improvements through park and recreation that we're presenting to you. All of the nine parks-related projects and three partner projects are in motion in some form or fashion, but this happened to be the first one to hit the threshold of coming in front of the council. Again, the $10 million allocation for these improvements is something we think are going to make a tremendous impact across the census tract, of which the ARPA money, or ARPA funding will be focused. And this project in particular, Clarkson Park, a great fit as far as the criteria and the census tract. And pleased to be bringing you more of these, as the projects hit, again, that threshold and timeframe to come in front of council for those other projects. But one had to be first, and this is it. So happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. President, Director Kalsovich. I just wanted to get clarification on these ARPA funds and criteria that you mentioned. Can you be a little bit more specific about how you arrived at picking this particular project out? One, two, was there any public input in that area regarding the recommendation that was, that is being put before us today? Those kinds of things, I think, the community needs to know. In addition to that, how will this be impactful to the census tract community as we better serve the community relating to ARPA funds and the intent that these funds are to be used to assist with people that were mostly impacted by COVID?
Matt Kalsovich, City of Omaha Parks and Recreation Director. We're very excited for the fact that, I'll start with the impact. These are addressing very specific issues with these public spaces that will make them safer, more inviting, the opportunity for more people to be involved in their use. As far as public feedback is concerned, I go back to the original outreach about the ARPA funding that the city received and the overwhelming commentary and result for improvement of public spaces. And so, as far as this $10 million allocation was concerned, we looked very specifically at the parks located in the census tract. We did receive commentary on this project in particular about the playground surface. And upon review and assessment, it warranted an improvement and upgrade. And so, again, being in the census tract, being part of the criteria to bring more people to a public space and have it be a safer, better environment for that kind of community gathering and participation. This was one of the early projects that we said was definitely something that met the criteria. So as far as all the projects are concerned, they very much followed a similar pattern. Certainly, we took, again, the feedback of the community and their interest in seeing public spaces be improved very seriously, and, and tried to do what we could to make the most significant impact at the places we identified. This park in particular is in a spot that's used by quite a few residents in that area. We know that it's a place, because of just kind of its unique position in the community, people will stop and engage at, even if they aren't necessarily residents. So again, something we thought really hit the mark, as far as not only being in the criteria, but a maybe extra special fit, as far as what we knew the interaction would be with the community, not only there, but as a whole.
So would you say that the public was definitely, their voices were heard regarding what they wanted to happen in their community?
In this project in particular, absolutely. This was the neighborhood offering us direct feedback from their leadership in the Neighborhood Association, as well as the people they represented immediately around the park. And then again, the bigger layer of the community feedback about public space improvement. And a place like this, that's serving quite a big population of people right in that area, it was an ideal fit and something we felt very good about, based on that feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Good afternoon, Matt.
Hello.
I know in the discussion I've had, meetings with the folks in Jocelyn Neighborhood Association, and I, when I would visit my dad's house when my kids were little, this park has changed over the years, and it's gotten pretty rundown, as I know many parks have, but I'll absolutely look forward to supporting this. And it takes time for that ARPA money to get out, but as you said, the $10 million that were earmarked for public parks, this being the first one, not that it's any criteria that, you know, there's parks everywhere, and I know there's other ones on the list. Is there 10? How many parks are impacted?
So nine parks and three public space partnerships. And so, again, very much like our traditional capital improvement program, projects move at different speed. There's different assessment or layers of review. This one was pretty clear-cut, as far as the scope of work, and then what we were able to accomplish in terms of working with a contractor and setting this timeline.
Okay, and I know in talking, in fact, I got an email a couple of weeks ago on it. The timeframe, if I remember reading the contract right, is it 180 days they have to complete the work?
Yeah, and some of that's weather contingent. We tried to move even a little faster to beat some of what's coming here, as far as temperature regulations on installing this type of service, so, surface. So if we needed to have flexibility to help them meet the goal of the completion of the project, we would do that. But we think we can accomplish in that timeframe, to be ready for really the peak use time going into '23.
And I know that'll be appreciated as we get forward with this one today and the other several that you mentioned. A couple in my district, but the rest, I'm happy to support these throughout the city. I know, I won't speak for you, but I, I'm guessing you wish you had another zero on that $10 million that we're putting out for the parks.
Yeah.
But this is definitely a good start, and I appreciate the outreach you did to the Jocelyn folks. When I got asked questions, you were right there quickly to answer. And I think that the outreach that the Parks Department has done, the surveys in Dolman, even other areas in my district, I do appreciate the work that you do on this, and I, I know the folks in Jocelyn that will be taking their kids on strollers at Park will be just thrilled at the upgrade that's going to be done here by the spring. So I'll look forward to supporting this today, and thanks again for all your work on this.
Our pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, and I agree, this is a pretty clear-cut example of what we're trying to accomplish here. We just took a visit about an hour ago to the park, and I think this will be a nice enhancement. And the $10 million we're talking about, for the rest of the projects, too, are something I'll support as well. In fact, I'd probably support more than $10 million if we could do that through our ARPA funding, and if there is additional ARPA funds still available that go uncommitted. Because I think public spaces and green spaces throughout the city are so important to our quality of life, and certainly important to neighborhoods like this one is. There'll be some more coming. I appreciate you kind of giving the rest of the picture, too, about the additional projects that are coming. Some will be quite large. This one, like you say, is pretty clear-cut, but when we start getting a few others that are in the million-dollar range, and there, there are several of those, I assume those plans will be a little more intricate, a little more complicated, probably something you'll want to share with the council, you know, prior to a city council meeting, and I'm sure the surrounding neighborhoods, right?
Absolutely, and so, you're right, some of these have a dollar figure attached to them that I would put them in the transformative category, as far as the existence of the park and what we're trying to establish for a long time to come. So yes, engagement, assessment, things that we're actually just either fully engaged with now, as far as the process is concerned, or on the cusp of actually doing some bigger outreach to collect information, specifically to what those improvements would entail. And yes, this one, again, just happened to be pretty direct, and that's why it moved a little faster than some others. But I can tell you, I will be very excited personally to share more of that detail with the council and the community, obviously, as we get to the point of actually implementing some of these things that, again, we think are going to make a tremendous impact.
Good. Yeah, one that comes to mind is Lynch Park. A million dollars there has been needed for a long time, and is a bit of a blank slate. So I think that'd be a good idea to, to have some heavy engagement around that. Can you speak a little bit more to the timeline? Are we talking, you know, the next few months for the rest of these parks, or the next six months? What would you foresee?
Absolutely, yeah, all of the above. Everything on the list is in motion in some form or fashion. Some are, you know, it may be 50%, some are maybe 10%, but active in some way. So yes, you could see things as soon as the next few weeks, next few months. Again, we're on the clock, as far as completion of projects, by the end of '25. And we know that sounds like a long time, but this is, again, these projects are getting layered in on top of everything else that Park and Rec already had planned. We know contractor speed and contractor demand is up, so we're trying to get to these, or get these in the queue for work as fast as possible, to not have any problems, should we run into some timeline or supply issues. Because again, large scope of work, Lynch that you mentioned, has a lot of moving parts. It's our highest-funded project of everything that has ARPA funding attached to it. But well worth it, and something we feel very comfortable about being able to accomplish. So we're working through some actually final justification criteria. We want to be very thoughtful anytime we're getting this kind of allocation of money and the parameters that are put on this. From a federal standpoint, we just want to ensure that when we're moving forward, everything is taken care of, as far as our competence and ability to do all the things that we've said we want to do, and we're making sure all of that is set around some of the logistical structure issues that we're doing to set the project.
Okay. And my last question for you today is, you know, I think it is a little bit impactful project to have $10 million into our park system. But then, when you put $10 million into your park system, you got to make sure you can take care of it, right? And we've had some conversations, I know we toured all the parks in my district recently,
Yes.
together with, with you and Mr. Fry, and talked about not only improvements in those areas, but also maintenance in those areas. And recently, the council did pursue a maintenance equipment-type program with the fire department and some other departments that I think will be very helpful, helpful to them, and, and that are justified, and, and probably what every department should be doing when they look at the long term of their equipment replacement and how that affects their operations. That's also true in the Parks Department. I think I've heard it expressed, that we could probably use about a $2 million per year replacement program in your department to, to make sure we have the mowers and the trimmers and all the equipment we need to be effective in maintaining our parks now, but then certainly in the future, as they get improved. That's something you're working on as we speak, right?
Correct, and thank you for bringing that up. Josh Fry, who you mentioned, our Parks Manager, is working diligently with Fleet, and we thank them for their support and their partnership on really digging deep about where we need to go, not just next year or the year after, but in that full picture of how we maintain a new system to ensure that we don't end up in a spot as challenging as we're dealing with right now. I certainly applaud the ingenuity and the resourcefulness of my team to keep operations going at the level we have. I certainly want to thank the council for their approval of the budget and what we're going to be able to do to increase part-time salaries next year, something we think will help, again, take a step forward, as far as solving maybe our immediate problem, but solidifying things for the future. And then we're also doing some departmental restructuring, really just to ensure that we have the leadership in places we need to out in the field to monitor things ahead of them becoming a bigger challenge or a bigger issue for us. Again, saving resources, funding, and being part of that bigger plan to know that we've got things done, not just now, but in the future.
And that plan might be something for the council to consider in the next budget cycle, or what would you?
That's our hope. We're on track to meet with Finance Department here in probably the next month or so. And I know we're hitting the crunch with the holidays, but share really an outline of what we'd like to see happen, and have some of that dialogue about how others have been successful. You mentioned the fire department, I know police and public works have gone through a similar exercise in probably about the last five years, and really map out how that can exist, based on what's available or what we need to do to bring new funding to that kind of resource.
Great, I'd be supportive of that, too. I think that's pretty important in this mix.
Thank you.
All right. No, oh, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yeah, would you also be inclusive regarding the plans as you continue to roll out these ARPA funds? As it relates to the future project, the other nine projects? Because I haven't had very much information regarding what these plans are. Perhaps there is a Parks Committee that we have here at City Council, but those minutes, I have not been privy to. And I'm not having a full understanding, other than the summary that the general public has received regarding these ARPA funds. Again, the ARPA funds are designed to help underserved community, and my community, the community that I represent certainly is one of those communities. And so, it would be just helpful to me to know the particulars of what that looks like, the details, other than a summary. I need more information than what I've been provided with.
Happy to pass along detail as we get more to provide, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding is absent, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 32 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item 33, a resolution to approve an appropriation in the amount of $250,000 for the FEI World Cup Finals sponsorship agreement.
Public hearing and vote on number 33 is today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Deborah Ward, the Executive Director of the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau, 306 South 10th Street. We're asking you today to approve a $250,000 marketing sponsorship with the Omaha Equestrian Foundation for International, National, and Regional Promotion Advertising prior to the 2023 FEI World Cup Finals. Now, the FEI World Cup Finals is one of the most prestigious equestrian events, second only to the Olympics. The event will be held here in Omaha, April 4th through the 8th, 2023, at the CHI Center Omaha. This event provides a global platform for the city of Omaha to showcase its growth, culture, and wealth of attractions. The enhanced marketing efforts will focus on increasing out-of-town visitation to Omaha for the 2023 FEI World Cup. Now, in 2017, was the first time we've ever hosted it, that event infused more than $19 million into our local economy, and in 2023, we expect that to be a lot higher. The allocation of these dollars will come from the OCVB budget, which is primarily funded from, through hotel tax paid by out-of-town visitors, and by state statute, the lodging tax money we receive must be spent on, on marketing. tax money we receive must be spent on marketing. In 2017, the event was a huge success with more than 52,000 spectators from 38 different countries in all 50 states visiting Omaha. The media attention was worldwide. There was, and I know the specifics on this one, 1,104 stories written about the 2017 World Cup here in Omaha, and stories ran in the UK, Ireland, Sweden, Norway, Brazil, the UAE, Israel, and New Zealand, just to name a few. Publicity value alone was $18 million. So it's a really good event for the city on a lot of different levels. The CEO of the Omaha Equestrian Foundation, Julie Boilson, is here today. She can fill you in on next year's event, too.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm Julie Boilson, CEO of the Omaha Equestrian Foundation, 1004 South Farnham Street, Suite 100. There is some very interesting things about this event, if you're not familiar with it. The 2017 bid for this event, Omaha managed to beat Hong Kong and London to host this event in 2017. In 2023, we beat Riyadh, Saudi Arabia, who wanted to host it in the Middle East for the very first time, and was told to wait till 2024 because Omaha had held such a successful event in 2017. This is a $10 million budget to build an equestrian center in the CHI Center, which is no, no small feat. We do expect ticket sales to exceed the $2.1 million of ticket sales that we had in 2017. We're five months from the event. We just started single-ticket sales on the 18th of October. We have over $1 million of ticket sales already. They're primarily all-session tickets, our VIP tickets, and so there's about 6,000 of those tickets that are already sold. So you can tell by the correlation of the number and the number of tickets, the very best tickets have already been captured. Of those 52,000 tickets sold in 2017, 70% were more than 50 miles from the venue. So this is a great event for hotels. We really estimate that we would have sold out about 40,000 room nights in 2017. So to date, we've already booked through the OCVB 4,600-room nights, and anecdotally, we know that the Hilton downtown is sold out, the Capital District Marriott is sold out, the Courtyard downtown is sold out, the Fairfield downtown is sold out. Close to selling out is the Cambria, the Hilton Garden Inn, and the Hampton Inn. So we have great response. We are expecting a tremendous crowd. We did do some scheduling this year. We added a third sport. We hosted jumping and dressage in 2017. We added a great young sport, vaulting, that is really engaging, really fun to watch. We think the community is going to love it. Omaha has a lot of dance and cheer and gymnastics fans, and we think it's a really great fit for vaulting, that those young people are going to enjoy watching these athletes. In doing that scheduling change, we did manage to schedule that every single competition has at least one full day off while they're here in Omaha, so that they can enjoy our city and not just spend their entire time in CHI. So we really thought that was important from a scheduling standpoint, and to make the decisions that do what's right by our city and let people really see and appreciate Omaha. We did make a change from 2017 in that we also adopted a theme for the event. If we were going to bring, you know, 50,000 people to Omaha, what were we going to tell them about Omaha? So we've really looked at the idea of kind of combining the years we've hosted this, of 2017 and 2023, to talk about the year 1723. So what was happening on this piece of land that the CHI sits on in 2023 that was relevant to horse fans? And it's really the idea that horses had made their way up through the plains, and how did their arrival back in the plains impact all of our local tribes and completely change the culture of the Lakota and the Winnebago? And, you know, all of our local, we're working with the Bluebird Cultural Initiative and working on storytelling. We're really introducing that, not just into our marketing campaign, because we felt like it was an interesting way to position the marketing, but also in our education efforts that we do on-site. We host about 4,500 school field trips each year, and it gave us an opportunity to use horses as a common love between different communities to create a conversation and to really give our local indigenous people an opportunity to tell their own story on a big global platform. So those are some of the things that we have done around making advances for the sporting program this year, and we hope you like, and we hope you like what we're doing for the city.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizens Foundation. And Mr. Fredson, a little patient, and as we calculate this, when they close Benson Golf Course, which is a part of this, we were going to add another $3 million for North Omaha.
So Donnie, that's not part of this. This is about an event coming to Omaha, right?
Well, no, when I went to Kewana's Club, where they invited me and Jerry Parks, they said this here, that $10 million that Don Bacon's going to give to Mrs. Johnson, we're going to use it when the boys, what is it, Benson closed their golf course because they closed Fountainhead. Benson guys said they seen a Bigfoot out the course, they ain't going there no more. The land is vacant.
It's not the same thing. This is an event to be at the CHI Health Center.
Oh, you mean, they're not closing the Benson Golf Club on 72nd Avenue?
No.
Oh, this is the wrong place. That means the Bigfoot was not up there, and them guys are not going back. They're just continuing to play golf.
All right.
Mr. Johnson, we need the $3 million from Don Bacon.
Are there any other proponents today on number 33? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Julie, I'll just engage you for a minute, if you would.
Okay.
I know we met on this, gosh, probably about a year ago, to talk about what we have here today in terms of some city support. I know the state is also supporting this event. This is one of those events that is probably better known outside of Omaha than inside Omaha in many cases, given its worldwide publicity and international flavor, but huge economic impact, as you were describing, that rivals things like the volleyball finals and the swim trials. So I think it's definitely appropriate that the city and the CVB consider this financial support to help make sure it comes here and does well here, and I appreciated hearing more about also the history you're tying, you're going to be tying the event to. And I know you have a lot of partnerships with the school districts, too, and getting kids involved, so I appreciate that aspect of it as well. So I'll look forward to supporting this here today. I see that Mr. Bagley has some questions.
Thanks, Mr. President. Julie, good afternoon. The meeting that Council President Fessron mentioned, it did seem like a long time ago, but talk about the partnerships you have beyond the city that are supporting this financially. And I know Deb had mentioned the great impact on our restaurants and hotels for the tourism that this brings, but talk a little bit about the partnerships of financial support of this beyond the city that we're doing here today.
Absolutely. We anticipate a half a million dollar grant through Economic Development through ARPA funds from the state. We've received $100,000 ARPA grant through the Commissioners, as well as an $88,000 grant through the VIF from the county. That is the only public support. The rest of the $10 million is all privately raised, ticket sales, sponsorships, vendor sales. So it's essentially a private.
In the, the other cities that were trying to get this event, the competition globally, not just in the Midwest, so I know a lot of work went into this, and again, in the discussions we had a year ago.
Right.
That I'll look forward to supporting this today. When it talks about, it says, for the multiple marketing touchpoints that promote the city of Omaha during the event included, it said signage in the athletes' warm-up area. Tell us what the, who the athletes are.
The athletes are all of the jumping and dressage athletes you just saw in the Summer Games. This is actually an event that is more exclusive than the Olympics, because you think about there's 200, I think there's 212 jumpers in the Olympics, there will be 58 here. So only the top 58 in the world. There was 187 dressage riders at the Olympics, there will be 18 here. So you're really talking about the absolute cream of the crop. And in the warm-up arena, that is adjacent, we do a public warm-up arena, it's a very European thing to do at horse shows, that the crowd is as engaged in watching the warm-up as they are the competition, and that area is completely free to the public. You know, you actually don't have to buy a ticket to my event to enjoy your event. You know, it's, it's one of the things that's nice. You can be part of the, check out the trade show area. There'll be, there was 137 vendors last time from eight different countries, so that's a great space to really kind of come in and enjoy. The education space is there. We're doing a lot of things to activate our theme in that area. There'll be a full Lakota Lodge constructed in that area. We'll be talking to kids about how the Lakota symbol, symbology around horses, because the Lakota tribe painted horses, and we're talking to kids about, they're like emojis. You know, you think emojis are a new thing, but they're not. So, you know, really giving them a lesson in how symbols have been used for a long time to communicate and express things. All of those things wrap around the warm-up area. So giving a signage in the warm-up area really amplifies your message to, frankly, the entire audience that's going to come and go to the ticketed event, as well as all the people that are going to enjoy the free part of the event in the trade show.
I appreciate you saying that, that it's free. If people wanted to go to that area, you don't have to buy a ticket to get in to the main event, but people, kids, families can go in there and see this right in front of them.
Yeah.
Free of charge, just to get it and experience it, that is really neat with these horses and people coming from around the world. They don't just train them in. I mean, I know the logistics of getting these animals here, it's quite remarkable, so I appreciate you being here today, and I'm looking forward to offering my support for this today as well. Thank you.
Yes, that's the other big, big benefiter, benefitter from this event is the Omaha Airport Authority, right? Not just people, but horses.
Yes. 51 to 54 horses will come in on the flight from Europe, and 18 to 24 horses will come in on the US flight from Florida.
Interesting. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Big question.
Sure.
About how many people do you think will actually come to Omaha for this event?
So of the 52,000 ticket buyers in 2017, 70% were from more than 50 miles away.
Okay.
So the bulk, the bulk of people will be from outside the Omaha area.
Wow, that's exciting.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly an opportunity for people to see from outside of our community some of the things we've done in terms of development.
We're very much looking forward to showing them the park. We're very much looking forward to showing them the zoo. You know, actually, last weekend, we were promoting the event on the side of the Burlington Building with the new park projection system, which we're very grateful for.
Wow, this sounds very interesting. So how will you get this out to the community in terms of us coming to this? Sounds like an enjoyable event.
It is. We just really started local promotion, you know. Budgets are budgets, and so we just started ticket sales, single-ticket sales on the 18th, and that was when we really started in Omaha. If you look right now, you'll see park benches, you'll see digital advertising, TV advertising, out-of-home. There'll be a takeover, well, there is a takeover in the airport, the baggage area right now that will go on through Thanksgiving, because we thought it was a great time to kind of capture audiences as they're traveling home for the holidays, that we might get them to come home again. And so, yeah, it's a very, very broad, my background is actually in brand and marketing, so that's my sweet spot. And then we're doing the same thing as there's large equine events in other cities. Actually, in Toronto right now, the Royal is celebrating their 100, 150th anniversary of the Royal in Toronto, and we have out-of-home and digital on-the-venue drive going into the Royal, so.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding is absent, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 33 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 34, an ordinance to approve the Exarban Keyes Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 34 is today. Proponents, please.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning. I'm here for any questions you may have on this agreement, and we also have a project representative available for questions as well.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Donnie Johnson, Johnson Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. My question, sir, if they're closing Benson Golf Course, we want to claim some of that land, so we can put our apartments over there.
This is not Benson Golf Course. And Benson Golf Course is not closing. This is the Exarban Keyes Apartments.
We're, we're going to block, the Exarban Knights told me to block everything until they start putting something in North Omaha.
Okay. Any other proponents on number 34? Seeing none any opponents.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue. Excuse me. Omaha 68132. Sound system is fixed today on number 34, but other similar type projects. I did a little homework. You don't apply things equally across the board on these TIF projects, and I'm going to say why. Exhibit D to this particular item talks about the Equal Employment Opportunity Clause. Some of the others do not talk about that. Some of the specific words that are in this one versus not the other ones are references to, without regard to race, religion, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, or national origins, age, or disability. Those words are not universally applied. And it's, from my knowledge, it's not in the Constitution. I haven't been employed for a while, so I don't know what the employers generally are able to do or not do. But the discrimination in any form is basically illegal under the Constitution. You really don't need those laws. So you need to change your wording on this Exhibit D, and maybe the Exhibit D on some of these other TIF applications, because they don't use those words. So in effect, you're discriminating against some owners or developers, or whoever it is that's applying for the TIF application. That's illegal, ladies and gentlemen. Now, thank you for not interrupting me. We have a representative of the Reader Magazine that mentions the Omaha City Council, so I'm going to mention it, too, because it plays into what I just said.
It needs to. If you get off topic, I will interrupt you.
I'll give you the copy.
I will address the issue this raised, too, when you're done.
Okay. I'll give you the copy. I am not a professional writer. I am not a community organizer, and I am not one of these documenters that the Omaha Reader replies, makes reference to in this new issue, but it does make reference to, and I quote, "our own plans being opposed to being a city that gets steamrolled by developers with politicians in their pockets." The lady that's leading this organization in Omaha. But it's a national organization, independent newspaper columnist, or whatever you want to call them. They're calling you guys maybe corrupt also, not just me. And I think maybe little Louis Jimenez that follows me around is one of these community developer writers, columnist, reporter, whatever you want to call them. Did you ever notice he always runs down and sit right next to the circuit?
We're not talking about him, we're talking about the Exarban.
But anyway, just to say that it's not just me that brings that up. Ask the Reader where they get their information.
Okay. Any other opponents on number 34 today? Seeing none, I want to close public hearing. Mr. Indambas, just one quick interaction with you, because I know you wrote the ordinance. Our nondiscrimination clause, which is in that document and is within city code, does provide nondiscrimination protection to all those classes on every city council document. Is that correct?
Bernard Indambas, Deputy City Attorney. I didn't actually write 10-192, but I did do the amendment that added sexual identity and gender orientation as additional protected categories, but yes, the city code, 10-192, the Equal Employment Opportunity Clause is required to be in city contracts. That's an ordinance that was adopted by the city council, I think, 40 years ago. The categories that are included have changed.
Yes, most recently, Amanda, I think 10 or 12 years ago.
Correct.
To read, just as you suggested.
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify that. No further lights, next item.
Item 35, an ordinance to approve the Skylark Development Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 35 is today. Proponents, please.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning. Here for any questions you may have on the agreement, and we have a project representative available for questions as well.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. On this particular item, I've driven by there recently. I failed to see. I failed to see how one block south of Dodge Street on Thirty-Eighth Avenue is anywhere near blighted or severely blighted. That seems to be one of their criteria for TIF. I can't believe that one side of the street is blighted or severely blighted, but the other side of the street is not. Or that one hundred South Thirty-eighth or one nineteen South Thirty-eight are, are not blighted and aren't getting TIF. That's a lot of, that's a pretty large property there from one oh one to one through one seventeen. And three million, eight hundred thousand dollars. Wow. I'd like to be a developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed, next item.
An ordinance to, item thirty-six, an ordinance to approve the Industrial on Four Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
The public hearing on number thirty-six is today, proponents, please.
Oh, yeah. Don Seaton, City Planning Department. Um, again, I'm here for any questions you may have and we also have a project representative available.
Thank you. Any other proponents? It's gotta be TIF.
Uh, yes, sir.
TIF at Twelfth and Fourth Street, right, Donnie?
Maybe, do I have to do the name first or start talking? Which one?
Name and address if you intend to address this, this item on the agenda, yes.
And then I talked to Mrs. Melton about asking us to vote as well? Cause I did vote, I got a lot of black votes.
That's not what this is.
Oh. Anyway, uh, TIF and this program, I like, but at the same time, we don't have nothing in North Omaha. And they say Bigfoot is running around in Benson Park, that's why they're gonna close it, cause those guys scared to go up there and play golf. So we wanna develop a hotel over there.
All right. Any other proponents to number thirty-six? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette, Omaha, six eight one three two. I haven't driven that area, but, uh, perhaps somebody can clear up something for me. This sounds to me like somebody's getting some benefit here to be able to resell some leasable bays. Makes me think, well, gee, I'm getting kinda old, I can't afford my property taxes. Maybe I can get TIF to have a new building for a business put up somewhere. I just have to convince somebody that particular property is, uh, brain problem, uh, is rundown and terribly unused and would not happen without TIF. Well, yeah, I wouldn't do it if I couldn't get TIF. So maybe you could take some time to explain why my statements are unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number thirty-six? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item thirty-seven, an ordinance to approve the Kennedy Square East Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number thirty-seven is today, proponents, please.
Don Seaton, City Planning, here for any questions you may have. And again, we have a project representative also available.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Uh, yes, sir. Is this part of President Kennedy family or George Kennedy?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Other proponents, please. Ms. Franklin.
Good afternoon, uh, City Franklin, seventy-five North, here to answer any questions. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, again, Bill Lucash, Brin Shore Development, nine oh three South One Hundred and Eighty-Fourth Avenue Circle, Omaha, here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Once again, I think some discussion is, is in order because affordable housing, well, for who? There's lots of little houses around Omaha, particularly on Hamilton Street between Coming and Thirtieth, uh, that would be very nice affordable houses if they could get money to fix them up. But they don't get the money cause they're not a developer. So I'm kinda thinking, you know, there's something wrong with this too. So I, I think the taxpayers would like some better justification for all of these projects. We would appreciate, uh, an explanation of one million, one million, nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. When I drive down Hamilton Street and nobody's done anything with that, a lot of those people would like to have money to fix their house up. Blighted areas are very close to my property down just ways west of Fiftieth Street. I don't know, maybe they're after my house for an apartment building. And I'd like to stop it before that happens. Thank you.
Any other opponents to number thirty-seven? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, would you like on?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Sidney, if you wouldn't mind coming up. How are you today?
Yes, I'm well. Councilwoman Johnson, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Um, can you give us a rundown for the audience as to what we're gonna do here on this project?
Yeah, so this is, um, actually a, a housing authority, uh, Omaha Housing Authority site. Their general counsel is here, should there be any specific questions. Seventy-five North is a partner, um, in this project. Um, if anyone's driven down North Thirtieth Street lately, recently, you'll, um, see that the, uh, former Spencer Homes public housing site, which has set, um, on the corners of Thirtieth and Spencer Street since, I wanna say the forties or fifties, has been completely razed. It's kind of an incredible site. You can just about see the seventy-five North Highway, uh, looking eastward from Thirtieth Street. So in, in that, um, in its place will be a hundred and two units of mixed income housing. Um, a third of those units will be replacement housing for former Spencer residents and the rest will have a mixed income spread of, um, affordable and market rate housing. Um, a variety of townhomes duplexes and then a larger multifamily, uh, structure, uh, with some commercial space on the ground floor.
And when can we expect to see?
So we will likely break ground within the next, uh, I don't know, eighty or ninety days.
Okay.
Uh, maybe early twenty twenty-three.
And when can we expect to see?
Probably a fifteen to sixteen month, uh, construction timeline, uh, there.
So twenty-three will be looking at a different space over there, right?
Yeah, it's, it's incredible. And so, uh, this mimics to a degree what we're doing, um, in Highlander, uh, one of the phases that we currently have under construction, which is one hundred and eight units of mixed income housing. A third of those are replacement housing for former Spencer residents. Um, it has a kinda similar feel or it will. So we've got rows of townhomes and duplexes and then a large multifamily structure with some commercial space. Uh, some of the architects on that project are, are focused on Kennedy Square East and it'll have a very similar feel.
Great. And do you have any amenities that you can?
Of course, yeah. Yeah, so there'll be, um, kind of a multipurpose, uh, sports complex associated. Uh, we'll have a community partner, um, that's activating the commercial space, kind of an, an anchor tenant for some future, uh, smaller, uh, small business space that'll be associated with the second phase of the Spencer Homes, uh, reconstruction on the west side of Thirtieth Street. Um, there will be, uh, infrastructure, uh, street improvements added with, with the project. It's gonna be a completely new neighborhood there, uh, that accommodates folks from a, a variety of incomes. It'd be pretty, pretty spectacular.
Sounds very, um, exciting and looking forward.
It's an understatement, yeah, it is. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. And I did, uh, drive the property recently, um, actually on the way to a program that Councilmember Johnson and I went to and spoke to about three hundred youth at North High School.
Okay.
And this was one of the projects we highlighted in front of that group and I know is, will be very exciting for the neighborhood. So I look forward to supporting this next week as well.
Thank you. Thank you. It is, uh, it's, it's overwhelming right now to, to see the neighborhood continue to, to strengthen, um, and all the folks that, um, that we've aligned with, including the City of Omaha. Your advocacy and support means everything, so thank you. And thank you for your consideration today.
Thank you. No further lights, next item.
Item thirty-eight, an ordinance to accept and authorize disbursement from the Fiscal Year 2021 Choice Implementation Grant in the amount of fifty million dollars.
Public hearing on number thirty-eight is today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Kelly Johnston Dorsey with the Omaha Planning Department. So promises have made, been made to the residents of Southside Terrace and their surrounding neighborhood for decades. And we really got traction about three years ago with the award of a one point three million dollar grant to the City of Omaha, Omaha Housing Authority and Canopy South to create a transformation plan for the area. We spent twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one working with the community and completing technical analysis to create the Southside Terrace Indian Hill Transformation Plan. The timeline from there comes somewhat of a blur. The notice of funding opportunity for this grant was made on November seventeenth. Five days later, we submitted our draft transformation plan. December fifteenth, HUD accepted that draft. And in year, about a month later, we submitted our application for the fifty million dollars. Just two days later, we submitted our final transformation plan. Let's just say from November to February, uh, it was a very busy timeframe for us in turning this around. There were twenty applications submitted and we were one of five that were shortlisted. We did a site visit interview, uh, in June and then on September nineteenth, we were one of four cities that was officially awarded a Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant for FY twenty-one. We are here today to accept, approve the acceptance of that grant. The grant is the fifty million dollar grant to implement the Southside Terrace Indian Hill Transformation Plan. In lieu of inviting over our, well, excuse me, let me back up. Our, there are three core goals with the transformation plan and with the, uh, with the Choice Neighborhoods Program. The first relates to housing. It's to replace Southside Terrace with high-quality mixed income housing that is well-managed and responsive to the needs of the surrounding neighborhood. People, to improve outcomes of households living at Southside Terrace related to employment and income, health and children's education. And neighborhood, to create the conditions necessary for public and private reinvestment in the neighborhood to offer the kinds of amenities and assets, including safety, good schools and commercial activity that are important to families' choice about their So in lieu of inviting over our three hundred stakeholders and all of our Southside Terrace residents down here to celebrate accepting this grant with us, I would like to play the short video from our, uh, our grant award event, um, held with, uh, at Southside Terrace. Remember, this is a celebration. This is a wonderful day and a lot of excitement for us.
Omaha has the will and adapt to the needs of our community.
Well, everybody involved, we, we have pulled it off. Uh, and now the real work begins.
A broad collaboration, the community participation in this project, which we see will lead to great success in our community.
We're grateful for the trust that you put on us, a trust that is worth more than fifty million dollars.
I'm gonna thank also, uh, a good pie met, uh, Simple Foundation. Thank you for being an anchor institution here and doing the heavy lift with the families.
It doesn't start with real estate. It starts with the residents. We realize what we're doing. We realize this is public housing. We realize that the people that live here are looking for some, something to transform.
I would like to point out of a few of the key items in our grant agreement. Our performance period is from September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two through September thirtieth to twentieth twenty-eight. Grantees, that is us, that we were required to involve the affected public housing residents in the implementation of the transformation plan. Public housing units must be replaced one for one, that is three hundred and fifty-eight units, and they all must be developed in mixed income projects. Supportive services must be provided for residents. And each household who wishes to return to the onsite or offsite replacement housing may return if the tenant was and remains lease compliant. A returning tenant shall be provided a preference for occupancy of the replacement units before such units are made available to any other households. We are able to do all of this work because of our amazing partners and stakeholders. Thirty partners and stakeholders within the community committed over one hundred and ninety-nine million dollars to leverage this fifty million dollar grant. This is our partnership structure for the grant. The city is the lead grantee. The Omaha Housing Authority is our co-grantee. Our housing implementation lead is Brin Shore Development. The neighborhood implementation lead is the City of Omaha Planning Department. The people implementation lead is the Omaha Housing Authority. Our principal education, or education partner is Canopy South and our anchor institution is the Simple Foundation. And our partners are also here and would like to say a few words.
Thank you. Other proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Cesar Garcia, twenty-four eleven O three Omaha, Nebraska. I just wanna say how excited I am in, in, on behalf of the community in South Omaha. It's been, uh, a lot of work in the last three years. We went through a pandemic where we're trying to involve the people, you know, and get their, their voices and understand what they needed. And, and here we are after fifty million dollars and, and it seems like a lot of money, but it's just a little drop to get us going. It's a lot more to bring and I'm, uh, very happy with the hundred ninety-nine million dollars that we're receiving from the community, including, uh, Philanthropy with, uh, was able to match with twenty-five million dollars, this effort. The most important thing I wanna say today is that this is all about collaboration. Uh, Canopy South bringing to the table, uh, when we came to the table, we're the new member. As we know, seventy-five North had gone through this similar process a few years back when they received twenty-five million dollars from the same grant. And we can see where that's going and we can see how beautiful the area looks and the uh, beautiful future that they have ahead of them. So, uh, I'm excited for South Omaha, along with the ARPA funding that we're bringing to, to this community. It, it is a one in a lifetime opportunity for doing something amazing. So I appreciate all everybody's efforts and the support, uh, from the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Brian Hanson, eighteen twenty-three Harney Street. I'm the general counsel for the Omaha Housing Authority. I'm just here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Hi, Todd Lieberman, um, two twenty-two West Gregory, Kansas City, Missouri. Um, with Brin Shore Development, I just wanna say thank you and, uh, to the City of Omaha and congratulations. We are so excited to be working with our partners on a second CNI effort in Omaha. Um, HUD has taken notice and the residents, I think, will, um, bear the fruits of, of what will be one of the most transformational projects that our company's ever worked in. So thank you for your support and your partnership.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I like new things and new development and success for everybody. But my God, two hundred and forty-nine million dollars. And the implication is that it's not costing me a thing, not a penny out of my taxes. But what's not set is the, the development that will come maybe with this drives the property tax up, drives the resale value up and you tax me based on the dollar sale price of somebody else's residence. That needs to change because you're driving older people out of Omaha. Cause they can't afford the continuing rise of property taxes based on somebody else's coming into Omaha from California and overpaying for a house. Well, you might not be able to attract as many young people to Omaha with all this as you think because people are up to their limit. And this does not explain who the grantors are. It talks about the grantees. But there's a foundation involved. I'm sure there's more than one. But is the government funding all of it? Or is it two separate grants? One for two hundred and forty, uh, fifty million and one for a hundred and ninety-nine? But how much of that fifty million at least is gonna be out of the city's pockets for operational expenses? Where's that money gonna come from? Probably out of my pocket. Thank you.
Any other opponents to number thirty-eight? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I will say there's certainly something we can't afford and that's for the, the residents of District Four that have lived in Southside Terrace and even generations before them to. and even generations before them, to afford to have them living like that. That we know. Kelly, your presentation was great. Thank you for not including me in that video, as somebody handed me the check, as we have talked about this for decades. And I was reminded by more than one person that, yeah, Vinnie, well, finally, finally, we have this money. We're going to move forward. And one of them was the mayor who took a picture with me with that check, and she reminded me as well. But that's okay, because it's good to be wrong sometimes. And it's good to be wrong on projects like this when there's so much positivity, positivity moving forward with it. If you don't know the area, there's been a lot of action and movement along, starting with the bridge that was replaced. Obviously, we have a great South Omaha Library at the eastern end of this corridor, Q Street. And as we all vividly remember, now we have a brand-new, state-of-the-art fire station there along the west quadrant of this area. And there's parcels along there that were, like many in the community, that we couldn't find people to mow them. Well, them days are over, and now them parcels along there will be developed with businesses and restaurants and jobs that are being created. But the one gigantic part that was missing was the changing of Southside Terrace, and we're finally there. A few of my colleagues were there with me. That was a great day. I feel like we're going back over the congratulations and the excitement. And I said to a few people in the crowd, as we listened to speakers and presenters of how amazing this was going to be, there was one group we forgot to mention, or maybe they were mentioned but just not enough, and that was the planning department, because we have a lot of work ahead of us, not just with the partners we have, but here at the city, because there will be a lot of changes that happen with the housing and with the zoning. And I'm sure, I know, I believe that our city, working with seventy-five North and others, working these projects, we know how to implement and navigate this even a little quicker, I would say. So we're happy to be here. I know, Cesar, I hate to really call you out, but I remember about the first five times we met, I was like, hey, I'm great, glad you're here. We're moving forward. And then maybe the next five after that, I'm like, hey, man, you got to show me something, like, like, where are we at on this project? And so, again, many thanks to the planning department for all this work and thanking you moving forward for all the work that's going to be coming your way. But again, thank you for this project finally moving forward. It is a game changer when we talk about the quality of life for people in District Four, the people in the city of Omaha in general. Nobody should be living in those conditions anymore. The infrastructure needed to be replaced probably fifty years ago, and it's time to stop tearing down walls for different living for people. It's time to relocate, build some more, bring people back in, and make this neighborhood and community what, what it always should be. And that's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President. In knowing that area, what's gone on over the years, and as it says in the agenda item, it's a transformational plan. And when you're talking about a quarter of a billion dollars to lift that community up from the work that's been done in the past from the Crox Center to Metro Community College, and now this, it'll lift folks up down in that district where Councilman Palermo has talked from day one, since I got on the council, that I know you've worked for years on this advocating and in the great partnership with everybody involved here. I appreciate the work you've put into this, and, and I'll absolutely look forward to supporting this. It's a needed shot in the arm for a long-neglected area that a lot of people over the years have tried to address. So it's just transformational, as it said here. And South Omaha will be great because of this. And as Vinnie said, the fire department also, and I think they did some bridge work there a few years ago on Q Street, and my OPBD job, I think every contractor hit every cable in the ground down there, that I would spend a lot of time down there. But it is going to be neat to see in the next six or eight years how this has transformed, and it helps the lives of many people and generations that have been stuck down there in this challenging living conditions that are the Southside area there. It's going to be great to see the work that's put into this. So thanks in advance for everybody that's listening on our screen there that has put a lot of work into this, and I look forward to supporting and watching the progress in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And I agree in that that video was nice to see again today. That was a really exciting event that day, exciting for all of us and all the partners that are listed here. But one of the things that I thought was most special about it was the excitement amongst the residents, and that was palpable. And you could see some of those bad footage just now in the, in the video. And that's why we're doing this. I don't often speak for the council, but I'm pretty confident those will be unanimous vote next week. This is, this is a transformational project that I know everyone supports. Cesar, if you had just a moment to come up for one more second, this does talk about, of course, the fifty million dollar grant award, which is major, but then the other hundred and ninety-nine million dollar dedicated match. Can you speak to what that involves and what the status of that match may be?
So what it requires, part of the, the application, that's that we'll, we'll talk to the communities, organizations that are working around in the surrounding and serving this community, and find out about their commitment in the next five years, as we are committed with the timeline, right? And what projects they have in the pipeline, and what about, what other things are they willing to invest? So we're aligning all those investments, and that's from organizations like One War, Community Health Center, the Simple Foundation, Girls Inc., Latino Center of the Millions, organizations that, that are committing some dollars in terms of even programs or infrastructure. And when we added all those numbers, it came to about a hundred and ninety-nine million dollars. So, and that is exclusively, exclusively to serve this community. So that was very clear in that application, that it was for this community. It wasn't just out of their budget that we need to put, is allocated for, for everything that they're going to be doing. So as we can see, it's very exciting that accounts with thirty, more than thirty partners in the partnership, looking into what is a real transformation and revitalization of this neighborhood. Everybody's committed, and, and they're putting the money in the table for that.
Great. Thank you. And I'm confident in the philanthropic interest in this project, too, as you, as you were speaking.
Correct. And the philanthropy will be twenty-five million dollars. At this point, we're still talking to some of those partners that are willing to commit to more than that or new partners. But as it is right now, there are twenty-five million dollars that have been committed to this project from philanthropy.
And I saw you're already getting started across the street, right, in the building that we toured near the park?
Correct. That's an Aplum Park. That's, that most likely will be the new home for Canopy South, will be hosting us, will be our place to be in the middle of the community to have, be people, be, have access to us. They don't have to go all the way to twenty four through. We are, we love the building where we are, but we need to be in the community. So that will be coming out really soon, and hopefully by June, we'll also have a great celebration there. We'll invite the whole council to come and celebrate with us, because it's, it's no for Canopy South, it's for the community. That's what we're going to be doing with this building.
Excellent. We look forward to being there. Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item thirty-nine, an ordinance to accept and authorize disbursement over more than one fiscal year from the fiscal year twenty twenty-two Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Act Grant Program in the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and twelve cents.
Public hearing on number thirty-nine is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you. Phil Rue, Omaha Police Department, five oh five South fifteenth Street, here to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other proponents?
You want name and address first, partner?
Sure.
Okay. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, North Ohio Concerned Citizen Foundation, forty-nine twenty-eighth North Fifty-second Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Now, I realize most of you folks were not on the city council when Mr. Vogel and Frank Brown was here and screwed up the deal, and Albertson pulled all their business out overnight. And I read this book about-
You got to speak to the grant here.
That's what I'm talking about, how Albertson pulled out their business overnight because it's Frank Brown and his dumb mistakes as a city councilman, and Jim Vogel with his dumb stuff. But in the meantime, my Harvard Business Classmate told me to read this book about Thomas Edison.
Donnie, you're not talking to the grant.
Well, yeah. Thomas Edison and Alexander Graham Bell refused any money from the federal government. They said they do not want the federal government sticking their nose in their business. And I finally figured out why. They had refused all that money. Another part about in the great era of the great Palermo and the great Gatsby, be very careful about this mental illness. People just use it all the time to break the law. They say what goes around comes around. So it's probably coming back, affecting mental illness to get out of going to jail.
Any other proponents to number thirty-nine?
I'm glad Frank Brown is gone.
Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item forty, an ordinance to amend the awards special conditions three and four to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Stop Violence Against Women Grants, approved by ordinance four three one zero two.
Public hearing on number forty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item forty-one, an ordinance to amend sections eighteen dash twelve and thirty-seven dash fifty-four, and to add new sections eighteen dash thirty-one and thirty-seven dash fifty-six of the Omaha Municipal Code to amend the nuisance trees and vegetation codes.
Public hearing on number forty-one is today. Proponents, please.
Josh Frye, Parks Manager, representing Parks Code Enforcement and Forestry, here to answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Non-action items. Items forty-two through sixty-two do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing at our vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at three forty-one.